So hi, everybody. This is the Finance Committee meeting of the Springfield City Council on Monday, June 2nd at 5:30. I'm Tim Allen. I'm Chairperson of the Finance Committee. Also members of the committee are next to me Caterie Walsh and Jose Delgado. And I hope we have any other counselors on here.
Just joined, Mr. Chair.
And who was that?
Zeta.
Also present Counselor Govan.
Counselor Perez, Counselor Govan, thank you for joining. Why don't we just go around and have everybody introduce themselves? We have fourteen items on here and I'm not sure where the Eastville, well, not Eastville Mall, whatever it's called. Item five. That item five. Yeah, so we're gonna, I, I'm gonna recuse myself on item five. So I'm gonna try to do all the other items before item five and then Counselor Walsh will run the meeting after.
Counselor, you said to all of them.
So let's.
I think that's item ten, are you talking about with Springfield Crossing?
That's on the council agenda, the Finance Committee meeting. It's on number five.
Oh, I don't see it. Okay, thank you.
All right, no problem. So why don't we go around and have everybody introduce themselves and then we'll get started. Seth, you wanna start?
Sure. Attorney Seth Stratton, I'm counsel for Onyx Partner.
Mary Hurley, for Onyx Partners.
Paul Conme, Work for Onyx Partners.
Great, thanks.
Tim Sheehan, Chief Development Officer.
BJ Galvey, Fire Commissioner.
Kathy Bono, CAFO.
Steve Argad, Acting Controller.
Matthew Fontaine, Assessor's Office.
Sequoia Malone, Grand Inspector in Finance.
Chris Frazier, Budget Director.
Andy Dodi, CIO.
Right, and on TV land, we already got Counselor Perez and Counselor Govan. Lindsay, you wanna introduce yourself and?
Sure, Lindsay Hackett, Deputy CAFO.
Who else we got there? Brian Santinello. And? So Brian, you wanna introduce yourself?
Yeah, Brian Santinello, City Counselor at Large.
Thank you. Sean Curran, are you there?
Yep, Sean Curran, City Counselor.
Okay, thanks. Young No?
Young No, Director of Internal Audit.
Thank you, Young. Jerry McCafferty?
Hi, Jerry McCafferty, Director of Housing.
Thanks, Jerry. Amanda?
Amanda Pham, Director of Admin and Finance for Development Services.
Great, thank you. Who am I missing up there? Tina, Tina, would you introduce yourself, please?
Sure, Tina Quagliato Sullivan, Deputy Development Officer.
Great, thanks. And Chris Signoli?
Chris Signoli, DPW Director.
Excellent. Do we get everybody?
Brian Connors.
Brian Connors.
Hi there, Brian Connors, Deputy Development Officer.
Great, thanks, Brian. All right, thanks, everybody for coming. We have fourteen items. First one is our April revenue and expenditure reports. Steve, would you start us off?
Sure, I'm submitting tonight the April revenue versus expenditure report. We are eighty-three point three percent of the way through the year and currently our revenues are coming in at eighty-seven percent and our expenditures are at seventy-nine percent, which is comparable to where we were prior years and we're in good shape. And I don't see anything really outstanding hitting us yet.
All right, two months, two, two months to go. It seems all right to you.
Seems okay.
All right, great, thank you. Any questions for Steve? On the financial report?
Yes, sir.
Okay?
Go ahead.
Yeah, who, who's that?
Chrissy Whitfield.
Zeta, go ahead, Zeta.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I'm looking up at the report and I'm noticing on the, um, I guess it looks like it's the education line. There's a variance of one hundred fifty-seven million, one thirty-one. Are you expecting to have expenditures of, because it looks like every month it was about fifty million? Is that is going to continue or is there some unexpected expense that's going to come through at this end of the year?
Counselor, we're not expecting anything unusual. That's net school spending carryover that we have to include by law.
So they will spend?
They'll spend those funds.
They will spend them. Okay, all right. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Counselor Govan. Yeah, Counselor Delgado?
Just question, I'm looking at some of these line items, like property taxes and the actual versus the budgeted amount down some, you know, good percentage, so.
For taxes or?
At least, this is what I'm looking at. Am I looking at the right thing here? It says?
It should be the tax rate now at ninety-five percent and this is as of April thirtieth and the due date was May first.
Okay.
So in May, we'll see, it'll be about, I looked at it's gonna be roughly ninety-eight percent in May, which is comparable.
Yeah, and then I also see intergovernmental.
And that would be the most like the chair sheet.
Okay, so we're still waiting on that from the state?
So that'll be, that's why he said eighty-three percent, because that's right in line with, we get it every month.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that there was in, like, so are we in line for what we expected to bring in from a property tax perspective?
Yeah, we're looking, it'll probably be roughly the ninety-eight percent collection rate, which is, we have always factored in two percent as uncollectible each year.
I was just trying to see if there was like any trends between that or mainly the excise, the car excise tax, if there was any trends on lower amounts.
The car excise, no. Right now, the car excise, which was in March, is at ninety-four percent. And that's, again, we're usually in the range of that. It, we hope it'd be higher, but then it's also gonna be another, with more vehicles where, because there's commitments throughout the year, not the one lump sum. And with the big one isn't until March. So even as the demands are going out, so they'll gallop some then and then another commitment will come through. So it always kind of skews it a little bit.
All right, I was just curious. All right, thank you.
Delgado, anybody else? Okay, thank you. Item two, budget transfer across departments. Is that you, Kathy?
It is. So I'm, I'm sure you're aware of it. We just passed the budget. So every year, we put two hundred fifty thousand dollars into our reserve contingent for contingencies for expenses to come up throughout the year. So these are some expenses and some estimates to get us through the end of the year. Some are for salary and wage accounts and as you know, we passed raises for the bargaining units. So some of the departments didn't have salary savings, so we do have to transfer money into their accounts. Clerks had a retirement from a person who'd been working there for like thirty-four years, so we did have a payout, so they did run short. Procurement, their advertising line, it's hard to judge how many bids she's gonna put out, so she is gonna run short this year. As I said, clerks is gonna need money for posted delivery, capital assets, they had raises. Emergency Communications had overtime. And then Elder Affairs was their salary account also. So these are just cleanups at the end of the year and I think I had spoken to you about the fact that with the raises, we may have some accounts that is gonna, are going to need money. So we reduced it from our reserve for contingencies, a total of one hundred ninety-six thousand.
Okay, great, thanks, Kathy. Any questions for Kathy on the item two?
Stuff makes sense.
No questions, let's move on to item three, free cash to various deficits, one point three millions.
So every year, there are some accounts and I know, I think I've spoken to before about the snow and ice that we, I was gonna come to you for, it was deficit spending. I have Chris on on here to answer any questions, but the snow and ice had a three hundred seventy-five thousand dollar overage. We are allowed to deficit spend. We need to fill that with free cash. Facilities, snow and ice was a hundred ninety thousand. And Steve is here from Comptrollers. As everyone knows, residents ever source bills went up, well, so did the cities. So I think we've addressed it for next year, but we are short this year. So we are gonna need four hundred thousand dollars for free cash to cover our electricity line item. And then fire overtime, I know that we spoke about it at the budget, that we had to increase that line item. In order to get us through this year, I'm gonna need another four hundred thousand dollars in fire overtime. BJ's here to answer questions as well as Young No, because when I, I knew there was going to be a problem, so I did ask Young No to do an audit of that of that account to see if there's anything we could do to help control the overtime. A lot has to do with, and I'll let them speak to injured on duty and the fact that we need to get more firefighters on and we have an academy now, but they can better speak to it if you have questions. So I'm asking for one point three six five from free cash that, once this transfer is made, that will leave us with a two million four hundred and eighty thousand left in free cash.
Okay, so we're not touching stabilization as well?
No, no, this is still free cash and there's still two point four million left in the account, which will just carry over to next year. We won't lose it. It'll just carry over to next year's free cash.
So just in summary, it was four hundred for snow and ice, four hundred for fire.
For utilities.
And four hundred for utilities.
Three hundred and seventy-five for snow and ice for DPW. A hundred ninety thousand for snow and ice for facilities. And four hundred thousand for fire overtime.
Hey.
We don't get a fifty dollar credit?
Our fifty dollars?
Did we get ours?
That was delivery charge.
So I, you know, unfortunately, our bills went up too. So we have, I think we've addressed it for next year. But we, we didn't.
But you had enough free cash to deal with it.
We do have enough and that's why you need free cash and that's why you need to keep free cash, because things like this happen. I mean, no one, residents had the same problem. They're, you know, the bills spiked and the cities did. We didn't expect the last few years, I don't even remember the last time we've, we've overspent our, and Chris can speak to that, we've overspent our snow and ice. But this year, due to the storms, how they hit and the amount of ice, they had to use so much salt that we did overspend. So we do have to.
Okay, any questions for Kathy on item three?
I have a question. It's actually for Commissioner Calvey. The overtime, is that because there are more fires or how does that accumulate?
So the overtime is due to manpower shortages. And that comes up from a very, various numbers of reasons. I ran the numbers the other day. And so far this fiscal year, we've had seventy-eight thousand lost time hours.
Wow.
And lost time hours come from injured on duty status, military leave, both paid and unpaid, sickness, paid and unpaid, FMLA, family medical leave. So those are the four big categories right there. So out of those four big categories, that's seventy-eight, seventy-eight thousand hours. The average person works twenty-two hundred hours a year on the fire department. So when you do the math on that, that puts us thirty-six positions short based on lost time for injuries and sickness.
Wow, but, but you're confident you'll have enough new people to?
We're hiring, we've got an academy of twenty going in right now. But it went up this year because his snow and ice removal was up, so were injuries from slips, trips, falls and fires in the winter months. We currently have five members out awaiting shoulder surgery who blew rotator cuffs out from injuries due to ice, icy conditions and falls and structure fires.
You think that the you know, the budget, that you, your budget, you put in next, for next year will accommodate?
It'll accommodate some, but we can never count on how many people are gonna be injured in the course of the year. So you, if you were to hire the additional personnel to make up for this shortfall, it's five million dollars a year. So it's about eight, it's about a million dollars for each eight positions that we take on. So to make up for the thirty-six positions, it's roughly four and a half to five million dollars with benefits included. So we can't hire up to ever, to kill overtime. So overtime's one point two to one point five million dollars, or it's five million dollars to hire forty more people.
But none of those injuries are injured in the line of duty, none of them?
They were all injured in the line, all the.
I mean, like in a fire.
Anybody who's on IOD was either injured at a fire, a motor vehicle accident. They fell while at the station doing snow remediation, things like that. So they were all on, all our IOD injuries are while they're on duty. And then we've got, you know, personal sickness. We've got five people with FMLA leave in right now for having, their wives are having children or their partners are having children. So that, that's, well, it's twelve weeks we have to account for in sick time.
The kids won't be able to work just yet.
So. If you, when someone has a child and they take their twelve weeks of FMLA, which is three months, then we have to make that up with overtime most of the time for that three-month period, so.
All right, thorough report. Any answers? And who else has a question? Zeta, please.
Please, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I guess I was just think, when you said that, I guess there was a I guess a short because of the higher electricity bills and, and all the other bills and using free cash, I just came to mind that, you know, our residents unfortunately can't do that, right? They can't have a fund where they can draw from like this. I wish that they could be able to do that, but because of, you know, the increases that they've had all these years, their emergency funds, I imagine, have been tapped. Some of them probably have their equity in their homes tapped because of the bills. So I don't know if there's a way for us to be preemptive about thinking about the property taxes, because you just passed a almost billion-dollar budget, which of course is going to increase property taxes and how are we going to be able to address our, our residents when those bills come out? Just putting it out there. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thanks, Counselor Govan. Anybody else on item? Was that item three? All right, seeing nobody else, let's move on to item four, bond authorization for citywide vehicles, three point three million.
As you know, I came in before the council at the last meeting and we passed a million dollars for free cash for vehicles and I said that we would be coming back to you for the bond authorization for the three point three million to give DPW the four point three million dollars they need for vehicle replacements this year. And Chris is on, in case you want to ask him any specific questions about those purchases, but I, I know I mentioned that at the last time.
Yeah, great. Yeah, Chris, could you just, you know, broadly just detail which? Is that all DPW and the rest of the city or is any of that police and fire?
No, it is, there is no police and fire in this purchase. It is thirty thirty-seven, excuse me, twenty-eight vehicles for various departments and nine vehicles for the DPW Enterprise Fund. Four new trash trucks, but we have departments such as TJO, code enforcement, parks, facilities, a lot of passenger vehicles that we're ordering now. Most of the passenger vehicles are twelve, fourteen years old. So it's a lot of passenger vehicle replacement along with a number of trash trucks for the DPW. It totals about four point three million and it's thirty-seven total vehicles.
Four point three, seven million, a million.
Vehicles we're gonna use free cash for.
Okay. Any questions for Chris?
I just have a comment. Thank you, Kathy, for the heads up. I know you've mentioned this a couple of times, so you're not just dropping this on her lap. I guess my question is what happened to the police and the other one, the other piece that you were gonna?
The police, well, the police, we passed a free cash of one point five million and they're buying cruisers with that. And then earlier in the year, we passed a three point two million dollar bond for fire. But going forward and over the summer, as I said, we're putting together a whole comprehensive list of what everyone's gonna need so that we can get a ten-year plan. So that when we come before the council, I have a better idea of the mayor and the city council of how, what we need over the years, because what I can't happen is for police, fire, DPW to all say, okay, next year we all need five million. I mean, we just can't do that. So we're gonna work on the plan over the summer and then have a comprehensive plan of how much we're gonna need each year and where to come as one package instead of three different orders. But this year, we're three different orders and you already passed the other two. But I'm hoping to make it easier and, you know, and once we get the plan together, we will present it to you guys.
When do you contemplate having that, September, October?
Chris, I know we're working.
That's, that's probably gonna be a three to five-month process. Once we identify all the vehicles that we're trading in as part of this order that we're going to be doing, we will then start immediately on the five-year plan for everything else. And I already have all the police information. I gotta work with BJ a little bit on theirs. They have their stuff in a different database. Police and DPWs are in the same database. So once I start that, it's gonna take between three to five months. So probably, you know, October or so, October, November, I'll have that, that report to share to everybody.
Great, sounds good, Chris. Thank you. Any other questions for Chris? All right, item five is the order establishing a Springfield Crossing Development District. That's the one that I need to recuse myself out of, so I want put that at the end of the, and I'll leave the room before it gets discussed. And Caterie will run it at that point. So item six is the Home ARP Grant Amendment Increase. Nine thousand forty-eight dollars.
Yes, hi, Tina Quagliato Sullivan. So this is actually a mi, a very minor increase to an existing grant that HUD, when they did their allocation formula, they just realized doing, when they were doing a quality control check, that they actually should have granted us about nine thousand dollars more. So the city council has actually already accepted this grant. This is just a minor increase to rectify HUD's error on their allocation formula.
Okay, thanks. Thanks for the clarification. Any questions for Tina on that one? Questions, thank you, Tina. Item seven, DPW rideshare funding, one hundred and twenty thousand.
Yep, this is funds that we receive from the Department of Public Utilities. The Department of Public Utilities collects taxes on Uber, Lyft, rideshares that happen across the state. They have a formula that distributes those funds back to municipalities for fiscal, or excuse me, for calendar year twenty twenty-four. We've received a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. That is up from previous years. Our high was actually in twenty nineteen and is mostly centered on obviously casino and other things that happened in the city. The money that we use or that we receive, a hundred twenty thousand, is used primarily for sidewalk construction. Last year's money is out on construction right now and what we hope to do is be able to put a bid out later this summer, excuse me, later this summer for additional sidewalk work around the city.
Okay, great. We like sidewalks, that's great. Everybody likes them, so.
You have to shovel them.
Unless you have one, you have to shovel, yeah. Any questions for Chris on the, on that? All right, thanks, Chris. Moving along to item eight, Peg Accessing Cable Related Fund. Fiscal year twenty-five, quarter four.
This is the quarter four franchise fee payment from Comcast, one hundred and thirty-two thousand, six oh five nineteen. We come every quarter, we accept that and then these are the funds that we give to Focus Springfield.
Okay, they come to us first.
Yes, we have to accept them and then we cut the check to focus.
Right, okay.
Is there an increase in funds to focus or is it?
Um, it's actually been going down a little.
It's going down?
Yeah.
Why is it going down?
I, a lot of people are canceling.
Just kidding.
A lot of people are canceling cable.
Really?
A lot of people what?
Don't have cable.
Don't have cable.
They're streaming, they're.
So you mean they're not watching us?
No.
No, you could watch them on.
I'm sure they're watching.
All right, any questions on that? Any further questions? Seeing none, thank you. Community, item nine, Community Compact Grant, two hundred fifty thousand. Who's got that one?
Myself and Mr. Dodi here.
All right.
So this is a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant through the Community Compact Cabinet for fiber deployments here in the city of Springfield. We'll be deploying fiber at fifteen sites. And I'll let Andy speak a little bit more if you guys have questions.
So this is rarely unheard of. IT generally doesn't get that many grants, but this is one we jumped on. Sequoia really worked hard on it. Basically, what it is, is to facilitate deployment of city-owned fiber optic cabling for municipal use. You know, throughout the city. We have we have several locations. We're working with finance to deploy and, and Chris to deploy fiber to some of the remaining sites, but we, we prioritized obviously public safety first and large occupancy buildings second, and then we relegated the smaller stuffs to the end. So this will help us complete that, those less priority-driven deployments.
Okay, great. This is a first of other grants like this, or?
So this is the first that we've done for IT. Through the Community Compact, we're only allowed to apply every other year. So we won't be applying again for this grant for at least another two years.
Sounds good. Question?
So as you know, we've been working on the digital equity stuff in terms of making sure that we have proved access for ability and, you know, for folks in the city. And I know we've also talked, I think I heard that we've started to try to implement fiber. So is this part of that original process or just totally?
This is strictly for municipal purposes. So this will carry mission-critical public safety information open locations, computers, strictly things that help the city do its business. And as more and more, you know, as there are more and more requirements in these buildings, the speed that we have to provide is increasing leaps and bounds. So we can't purchase, you know, lines from a company for the cost that we can deploy our own fiber optic cabling. So this is strictly for municipal purposes. It will obviously have some impact on the, you know, community providing, you know, allowing us to provide more services or allowing us to, to push data faster, more efficiently.
I'm just curious how this, and, and we could talk offline more about it, just how the actual installation of fiber in some of these areas, how we can continue to tap this up, because as you know, we've had conversations around getting fiber across the city. How do we connect these? And there's, I'll, I'll wait it for another time, but I think this is a home run for efficiencies for these urban cities. Towards our cold and getting fiber across the city, it's a whole other conversation. So, all right, thank you.
Counselor. Any other questions on this item? Seeing none. Thank you, Counselor Delgado. Thanks, Andy and Sequoia. Item ten, ESG entitlement grant, no match required, three hundred and twenty-eight thousand.
Hi there, so that's me again. So the next four items are actually our, our regular entitlement grants. I don't know if you want me to go through that all or if you want me to go through them individually.
You could just do a brief description of them, of them all.
Sure. So there's four of them. The Community Development Block Grant Program, which I think folks are fairly familiar with that covers things like, you know, sidewalk improvements, park improvements, public service programming, proactive code enforcement sweeps, our homeowner emergency repair program, down payment assistance, things like that. This year, we had a decrease in funding of just under seventy thousand dollars. The next one is the, we have the Home Investment Partnership Program that is really focused on affordable housing. So that also covers a portion of the da, the first-time homebuyer down payment assistance programming. It also covers creation of affordable multifamily and homeownership units as well as TBRA and rapid rehousing. We also have the Emergency Solutions Grant, which serves people who are currently homeless, covers a street outreach team and housing navigators, as well as the HOPWA grant, which is Housing Opportunities for Person with Aid, Persons with AIDS. And that serves people who are HIV positive to support housing stability and includes rental assistance, homelessness prevention funding and legal services. And so all of those grants received, you know, relatively small when looking at the overall size of the grants, cuts across the board.
Great, thank you, Tina. Any questions on any of those within that grouping? Item ten, eleven, twelve, or thirteen? Seeing any questions? That leaves us with one item before I recuse myself, with just HUD Continuum of Care Grant. So why don't we do that and then I'll make a motion that we approve the stuff. So why don't we do that, and then I'll make a motion that we approve this stuff up to that point, and then I'll exit.
Hi, Jerry McCafferty for the Continuum of Care Grant. This is an annual grant, this year it is nine point three eight million dollars, which is an increase from last year. This, uh, the majority of these funds pass through the city and go to multiple agencies in the community. It actually funds ten agencies operating nineteen different programs. Um, those programs provide rental assistance and supportive services to people coming out of homelessness. Some of the grant also comes to the city for, um, grant administration, but also the, the planning and coordination of the system of providers that work to respond to homelessness. Uh, we receive these funds on behalf of all of Handen County.
And then we disperse them to the right places?
Correct, yes, which is already called out in the grant, so the grantees needed to be part of the application to HUD for these funds.
Um, that's great. Uh, anything else pertinent to say about them, or is it services that grants, it's a typical, a grant that we get every year, and generally is helpful to a lot of different communities, is that right way?
Yes, it supports about, uh, it supports, it provides rental, among other things, it provides rental assistance to about five hundred households that have moved out of homelessness. So it is the support system for people who have been homeless and are now housed.
That's, that's excellent, great, a good description, thank you. Um, any questions for Jerry on that one?
I, I would just like to make a comment.
Yeah.
Um, Jerry, you mentioned that there are multiple agencies. I think, um, going by past meetings, that the counselors are probably want to know who those agencies are that, uh, that are part of the grant. Will that be put in the presentation tonight?
Well, uh, yes, and do you want me to say now, or just hold it till?
I think you can bring it up, I think the counselors may be more interested in it than people around the table, but people always want to know who the agencies are.
Happy to, I'll be happy to list them out, yes.
Yeah, that always helps when that happens, so. All right, any other questions for Jerry? Good report, um, I've got to recuse myself, so I'm going to make a motion that all the items we've discussed up to this point, just items one through fourteen, with the exception of item five, uh, I make a motion that they be approved and go to the council meeting.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Hi.
I, okay, thank you. Thanks, Counselor Walsh, for taking over the item five.
Just bringing this on me too.
Counselor Doggato will help you, I'm sure.
I help him with the technology piece.
It's my tech support.
All right, so item five, order establishing the Springfield Crossing Development District and invested revenue called DIF, the Springfield Crossing Development Program and Invested Revenue District Development Program and authorizing a pledge of certain future property tax revenue to the payment of bonds to be issued by the Massachusetts Development Finance Agency, sponsored by the mayor. So, um, how many people in here are here for this issue? Okay, that's what I figured. So we'll start with the city side first.
Great, thank you, counselor. Um, my job this evening is to basically distill the thirty-two pages of information that you have in your package with regards to the proposed DIF. The Office of Planning and Economic Development, in conjunction with the Finance Department, is putting before the council for its consideration the use of district improvement financing under Mass General laws, chapter forty-Q, to support some of the extraordinary development costs being incurred by the Springfield Crossing Project. On the former Eastfield Mall site, this project has an assessed value as completed of seventy-seven million dollars. The reference costs include the demolition and abatement, site prep, earthwork, and paving. The total cost of the proposed public subsidy is eight million dollars. The proposed DIF District would use fifty percent of the new tax revenue realized by the project, which is called the increment, to cover debt service on bonds issued by Mass Development on behalf of the project. The related debt is not attributable to or assignable to the city of Springfield. The city is only responsible for transferring the funding to the degree available into the DIF District Revenue Account for the trustee servicing the bond debt. The remainder of the project financing, which will include two additional phases of development for housing and additional commercial development, will be secured by Onyx Partners Limited LLC from Needham, Massachusetts. In total, the entire development cost for all three phases of development is estimated at one hundred and forty-seven million dollars, thus expanding additional project-related tax benefits to the city. Based on the assessor's valuation analysis of the DIF commitment, of eight million dollars would be realized in either year seven or eight of the DIF Invested Revenue District. After that, the city would realize one hundred percent of the total taxes on the Phase One development. The council is being asked this evening to adopt four statutory components which would establish the DIF District. These include the Development District, the specific geography of the DIF, the Invested Revenue District, the geographic area from which the tax increment will be calculated, and the Development Program, and that is what will the DIF funds pay for, we reviewed that earlier, and the Invested Revenue District Development Program, and that is the Development Program from which the tax increment is calculated. It should be, um, I should make note that the proposed DIF has been extensively reviewed by the city's bond council and its financial advisor as well. Um, there are several public benefits of this development that are worth noting. Uh, the developer has committed to a prioritization of local, uh, businesses, uh, coming into the development. The city's ability to use the parking area for staging, coordination, and incident response activities during significant local state or national emergencies, good faith efforts to implement a Springfield-first hiring program, uh, and the incorporation of public art on the project site, and the incorporation of sustainable public furniture, the incorporation of public events such as local art exhibits and entertainment, just to name a few. I'd be happy to take any questions.
So, in other words, we can look forward to a huge can of tomato soup.
And a couple of pigeons.
Uh, is anyone else from the city that wants to speak on this?
Do you want to say anything on the tax analysis?
I'll just say that, now, what we look at is a base value for the project. That'll be the fiscal twenty-six assessed value. The increment is calculated as the difference between that number and the total project as completed. These are estimated values, uh, nothing is set in stone, but the DIF requ- uh, district requirement in the agreement was to have some kind of estimation in there as to what the property taxes would be.
Anyone else in the city, did you?
Oh, yes.
I should add one issue more, uh, just to clarify for counselors. There is a but-for, uh, provision that goes, uh, within the, the statutory requirements associated with this. Um, and ultimately, this funding amount is structured into the overall capital funding for the, the project itself. So the bank that's funding the other pieces of this has looked at this funding as, uh, as as attributable to the project. So if we don't ultimately end up advancing, there would certainly need to be changes made to the project overall.
Okay, so I think I will turn it over to the, uh, our guests that are here to talk for Springfield Crossing, why don't we?
Counselor Gavon hasn't.
I'm sorry, and Counselor Gavon?
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, a question that came up for me, um, was how much would the amount that is being spent here, how much is that going to increase the budget by?
It's, it's, it's not, it wouldn't have any impact in terms of the budget, because the, the resource for the repayment of the debt counselor is coming from a portion of the new tax revenue or new growth that is coming in as a result of the project, so there's no in, in terms of.
All right, great, great. Um, also, I have a couple of questions from one of our constituents, she emailed to us. Um, she said, would passing this regulation mean that if the city engaged a tax-exempt entity with a pilot agreement, would the revenue be captured for use in the DIF District or into general revenue?
No, it would go into general revenue, counselor, because you have to define the geographic area, um, of the DIF District, which is part of the action this evening.
Okay.
And you have to spell out what the program is, because at that point, the program is factoring into the tax calculation that the assessor's office was looking at.
Okay, okay, and, um, the last question that she had, um, does the creation of the drift, of the DIF circumvent the council's authority to say yes or no to TIF agreements?
No, this is a, a completely separate statute, um, we would definitely have to come before you with a TIF agreement. Um, we would not be doing a TIF agreement in this area, though, the defined TIF District.
Right, right.
The tax revenue, we're basically coming back in on the tax revenue, having a fifty percent of the new growth over the course of that, uh, term of seven to eight years, going directly to the city and the other fifty percent going to the debt service, uh, for the activities that we talked about.
Okay, okay, great. Um, as, as the counselor representing that award where the, um, Springfield Crossing is now, um, I'm excited about this project coming on board, I'm hoping, you know, that we can have it open by, um, before Thanksgiving if possible, and I think that it's going to be a great addition to our city and to our neighborhood. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Doggato, member of the committee, has a question?
Um, can you explain to me, you said assessed value, is that based off of if it was created today? What it would be, or is that an estimation of what you think it would be whenever it's completed in the future?
So the seventy-seven million that Tim referenced would be the project as complete and as planned, that they build everything they told us they were going to.
As of, like, as of today, whatever values would be today if it was completed?
Correct, okay.
Um, I do say that I like that I heard there was some public benefits piece, because the first thing I was going to ask is if we're asking for, uh, this type of, uh, let's call it a gift or whatever you want to call it, you, you're saying if I say it's a gift, um, you know, what would be the, the public benefits for the community? And so I like that I'm hearing, you know, some of the things, but I guess can you break down a little bit more with the Springfield? Like, is there actual any substance of the Springfield Hiring Program, or is it just we're going to prioritize city residents first, do you know?
A- as the developer, this was an item that you put forward as part of the public purpose, um, do you want to expand on it?
Yeah, as far as just hiring goes? I'm sorry, uh, I'm Anton Mokiyanda, one of the founders of, uh, of Onyx Partners. Um, so, or actually the founder, sorry, um, been a while. Um, so, yeah, the commitment that, that we had made to the community was that with all of the, um, tenants who are going to be there, that they've all agreed to have, um, job fairs, right, which they'll, they'll start soon. All, the stores are programmed now to be opening at some point in October. You've everyone a sense of that, and they understand the commitment that we've made to the community to have a preference go to everyone who was a Springfield resident. Um, I think they'll be able to more than fulfill that based on the number of jobs that we'll create, but we have a commitment from all of those retailers that we have relationships with.
In addition, there's a, an entire building that's been set aside for Springfield businesses. And that number would depend upon how much space each of them want to take, but the, what's the square footage?
Sixteen thousand.
Sixteen thousand square feet, feet, foots.
And then, I guess my, my last question is, I know you guys are already in the process, but why now are we coming to the table for this versus in the beginning when the project?
Because we initially were going in a whole different direction. And it turned out that that was not as beneficial for the developers as this is. And so we retained bond counsel, we retained, um, significant advice. And it was thought that this was the way to go.
So just to add to that, uh, we had originally negotiated, uh, with the, uh, development team uh, to do a TIF for this project, and we were advancing forward with the thought process that the TIF would ultimately come to the council much sooner than today. Um, and, and clearly there's timeline associated with that the developer needs to meet with regards to the tendency that he's got, that's why you've seen some of the construction advance. Um, but as we were coming through that process and ultimately getting an understanding of what the development needs were in terms of being able to monetize a TIF, the way Massachusetts has got it structured in terms of TIF agreements, is that the benefit is, the tax benefit flows to whoever is ultimately paying the taxes. That doesn't necessarily provide the, the capital component that ultimately assists with the development of the project. So we had to basically turn this around and undertake the DIF as opposed to continuing out with the DIF. And I want to say that we have been working on the DIF now uh, for the better part of four months, roughly. Yeah.
At least or more, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, it was conceptualized long before that. That was.
Well, I, in terms of actively working on the, the DIF.
But we started way back before that.
All right, because there's, uh, because for me, when you see a Yuri in construction mode, you kind of looks like you already had this.
How are you?
All of a sudden, why is it all of a sudden now, right? And especially for us, we have to respond to constituents who are saying, hey, how do businesses get, you know, a tax break, but we don't, right? That's kind of the biggest component that we need to make sure, I mean, and I'm business-friendly, like, I want to make sure that we support, we want to bring in businesses, I think this is a great project. I just want to make sure I understand everything fully.
I, I wouldn't say, I wouldn't say it's a tax break, it takes money to make money.
It's.
This is an investment that will survive long past the initial eight or ten years, where there's an incentive for the developer and the bank that li- that's lending the money to lend the money. And that is, give me us, give us this upfront, uh, and we will in essence, on the back end, not only pay it back, it's going to be paid forward many, many years at a hundred percent of additional tax revenue. Do you want to continue to have six hundred thousand a year, or do you want to continue to have a couple of million plus per year? So that's where it's at, and it's, you know, it's the kind of thing, what's the message you want to send to businesses that are looking to invest in Springfield? We don't want to do business with you, or we want you to come and we will work with you to make it a reality.
Several of the counselors have their hands up, so I want to get to them. Counselor Perez, you've had your hand up for a while, do you still want to ask a question?
Um, yes, I just, uh, have a question. So what's the duration of this project, um, right now? For this development?
Do you want to talk to the development itself? What's ultimately going to be created and, and what's the timeline around it?
So, um, the line share of the project will be completed, uh, in advance of the holidays, so we expect right around Thanksgiving. Um, we have one tenant who will not open until the first quarter of next year. So I'd say everything except for the housing component, which we haven't fully wrapped our arms around, will be done certainly by the end of the year, with one tenant lagging into the first quarter of next year. That's really the, the duration of construction, and then everything should be open and operating at full capacity.
And can you just indicate how many square feet of retail that reflects?
Uh, you're going to put me on the spot? Yeah, I was going to say, so it's about
Three seventy-six.
Including the, the lagging anchor?
Yes, yeah.
All right, so it's about. All right, so it's about four hundred thousand square.
It's a retail project counselor that's roughly four hundred thousand square feet. Um, they're, it, they're indicating that, you know, the, the project will be fully developed and operational by the end of the calendar year.
Yep, except for Target, which is public knowledge. Target will lag, Target will open in the first quarter.
Nothing is more public than Target.
And it's nice to have a target in Springfield.
But I actually, not that anyone cares, but having grown up around here, I'm more excited about the rest of it, but Target's fine. It all makes for a good project. And I think one note for the council is that, the question of so, we actually started the process of, of coming to, um, different um, groups within government begging and pleading on our hands and knees for assistance, uh, well over a year ago. We started the project at risk. Um, I take full responsibility for that. We did not have all the pieces figured out or engineered. Um, and we willfully learned this afternoon that, um, upon completion, based on the estimate, which is a little bit high, the costs that we'll have invested into the project far exceed the current value. So it has nothing to do with anyone in the city of Springfield, has to do with market conditions, and that's a risk that we take. Sometimes you win, sometimes you lose. We've lost significantly, um, on the investment side, but I can assure you, having shopped at that mall my entire life, which is fifty-five years, that it's a meaningful improvement to the community. Um, we're in conversations and negotiations to buy, um, other buildings up and down Boston Post. We already purchased the old, uh, cinema building where the R M V is across town. So we are continuing to make meaningful investments in the city of Springfield. And our hope is that what we're doing there, beginning of Boston Post, will continue right down the street as we continue to redevelop, cause you'll have more vacancy, need people to come in. So hopefully we can recover what we're losing here, which is really the partnership and the commitment that we're looking for from the city.
So, Counselor Perez?
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to turn it over now and recognize Counselor Tracy Whitfield, who is very nice.
Thank you, thank you, um, Madam Chair. So I was listening, I went back and I listened to the video, just a couple of things that I was confused on. But first you said you purchased the cinema building and which else, what else?
The cinema building on the other side of Springfield Plaza.
Oh, the other side?
Yeah, well, I call it the other side.
Where the registry is.
Where the registry is, so we're re, we're redeveloping that building. Yep.
Yeah, just do the whole Springfield Plaza.
We're well underway there. Recognize it when we're done with it.
Well, good, good, cause then I can walk right there. Um, okay, it's all about me. Um, but I did have some questions about the mass development bonds, um, because the mass development bonds were already bonded, right?
No, they would be, basically be taking the bonds to the private sector market and looking for, uh, someone to actually buy the bonds.
Okay, I don't understand.
So they, the pledge would be eight million dollars. So there would be a bond issuance that would go into the market for eight million dollars. And ma- mass development would ultimately shop that around and find a buyer for, to basically pledge that capital. And then they would then get paid back with the proceeds that were going into the, the diff revenue account. So that's how the debt service on the bonds get pays, pays back. And that, that obviously includes principal and, uh, uh, interest.
Because that was my only really concern, cause I thought that the bond was already there. So if the bond was there, you already knew you had these expenses before and blah, blah, blah.
Yeah.
Um, but I do understand as you start developing projects, things come about that you don't anticipate. Um, and costs, it, cost are just increasing overall with.
From the city's standpoint, our biggest concern was basically ensuring that there was no responsibility associated with the repayment of the debt service, or of the debt that was attributable to the city of Springfield. And both, uh, the city's financial advisor and bond counsel have signed off on that.
Okay, well, that's great.
I can't tell you how many times I heard from. We're putting nothing at risk.
Yeah, um, so other than that, I was just a little bit confused of why we would be paying back, um, the mass development bonds. Um, everything else sounds pretty reasonable to me. Um, what kind of things did you come about during the construction phase that you didn't anticipate originally?
Which time do you have? So we well over eleven million were the surprises. So we had to clean up a building that we didn't anticipate. That cleanup was like six point eight million.
What's cleanup like?
Uh, cleanup for hazardous materials. So it was inside the walls, we couldn't have tested for that, so that's a big expense. And then we found unsuitable materials that we couldn't build to the tune of a few million dollars that we thought some over there and someone dug a big hole and put a bunch of stumps and trees and stuff that deteriorated, so we had to dig that out. Um, the, 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 the total bill for things that were unanticipated, um, eleven, twelve, thirteen million, fourteen, I'm guessing, but it's way up there, it's not one or two.
When we started on this, Anton was giving me a sense as to what the environmental remediation numbers were gonna come back at. And I was like, you're out of your mind, that's way, way, way out of the marketplace. So we got the, the numbers back and they were over his number.
Over his numbers, yeah. I know the surprises are, um, crazy, but it's good. Uh, I will support this because Target is coming. It's not just Target, but the fact that you all, cause I was listening to the video, that you have a building specifically for small local businesses. And like permanent residency, not, um, like pop-up shops, which I'm not opposed to that too, we can still do pop-up shops outside and things like that. Um, we could talk about that, but, um, just having a space for Springfield residents to go, I think is big. And then with what is coming, um, will create more traction for those small businesses. So it all just makes sense in growing the Springfield economy, but I can't wait to see what's gonna be done with Springfield Plaza. But, um, that's the only questions that I had in comments. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Counselor Whitfield. I don't know what happened to Counselor. Maybe he's on his way here to. Do any of the other, uh, counselors, Counselor Fenton, Counselor Santanillo, do you wanna make any comments or, okay? Anybody else wanna make a comment?
Current Marleyas.
I don't see Sean.
Oh, there he is.
Oh, sorry, Sean, I didn't see you.
Uh, just a question, i- if this weren't to pass, what, what happens with project if you didn't get the, this financing?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the question. Project shuts down.
To the, okay, so the, the project can't go forward without this diff financing, basically.
That's correct. That's the bottom line.
Like the whole project or part of the project? Cause I mean, they're moving in in October, so that's kinda hard to believe that the whole project was shut down.
It, it's like, which baby do you want to drown and which do you want to live?
Tough question. Yeah, I, I don't want any babies drowned.
So the lender has been, um, um, advancing construction financing, contingent upon um, this, which is a risk that we took. So we took the risk of securing the financing, which we had to guarantee personally, um, with this being there. So again, a risk that we took, but without that, there's, there's no commitment on behalf of the lender to go beyond um, August seventeenth and continue financing. That's kind of our drop dead date.
August seventeen?
Yes, we've shared all those documents with everybody.
But we can't wait till August seventeenth for action by the council. We would like to see action taken tonight. There's been a subcommittee meeting of economic development, subcommittee meeting of finance. And basically, push has come to shove. And as I indicated, um, before to, um, the counselors who are here, it takes money to make money. This eight million dollars is not a gift. Okay, it's an investment in initially a seventy-plus million dollar project that then is gonna have another small, um, commercial aspect. It's then gonna have real estate, housing for the city of Springfield. How many units?
About fifty-ish.
And, you know, this is for land that was just sitting there. Um, and it's not even.
Well, no, the timing. Timing to the mayor's point is, is critical. In that, we dress you as Mary.
Don't call me, anything but late for dinner.
Um, so our drop dead date to, to Mary's point is when funding stops. So there's a time between the approval that the city council would give us tonight and the time it's gonna take us to take an approval and turn into actual spendable dollars that we can invest in the project. So we've taken probably ninety days longer than we had to get to this point, cause now it's gonna be a scramble post-approval, hopefully fingers crossed tonight, for us to get the actual dollars that the banks requiring that we have to put in the project.
Make a point?
Anybody else?
Yeah, I just, Counselor Perez, I just wanna say that I'm in support of this, uh, project. Um, I, uh, so many years seeing that old, that empty lot there um, and bringing fifty units for housing, which is very well needed. I'm excited and I'll be in support of the project. Thank you.
I hate to put Tim or the assessor on the spot, but could you just explain, I think it's beneficial, we talked about the base value at seventeen and what the property was previously. There's already been, uh, a value appreciation um, on the site in the, during this construction period. And that, that increase will not be a portion of the value increase that is being shared with the, with the developer for this.
The, the original site that was purchased was about forty acres. And we had an assessed value for fiscal twenty-five on those forty acres. The ask in the agreement was an estimation on the diff district, which is thirty-four acres. And it's the fiscal twenty-six assessed value. Excuse me, yeah, fiscal twenty-six assessed value, based on the property's physical condition as of June thirtieth of twenty-five. So in thirty or twenty-eight days from now. So the base value, yes, does take into consideration any market appreciation, the land in a little bit of construction that's gone on.
I guess my, my question is, did, and again, I hate to put you on the spot, but does anyone recall what the valuation was when there was the empty Eastfield Mall? I, I think it was significantly less than seventeen.
Well, it was six hundred thousand in tax revenue.
Yeah, so the, the forty acres, the dip is only thirty-four acres, but the, the old uh, assessment with the forty acres was roughly fifteen million. So separating out six acres and then the additional investment and market appreciation, uh, that's what's led to the opinion of the seventeen point eight as the base value.
Thank you.
I don't know, our counselors, any comments?
I can't stop at Target yet until they change D E I. I forgot, I gotta text like, what? But I'm gonna sneak in with.
You're saying the, uh, substitute chairman of the, uh, finance committee. And I don't doubt that this is a great project. And, and it's very nice that someone that's grown up here wants to contribute so much. But I don't like the fact that this is handed to me tonight and we gotta vote on it. Or we killed the project. I am personally insulted as a counselor that this is how that has come to me. And I do not feel comfortable making a positive recommendation tonight. And I feel we need the whole entire council to express their opinion. So, uh, that's my feeling. I can't wait to hear what the rest of the council says. We already decide how I'm gonna vote, but you know, Tim, how the council feels. We got, getting stuff at the last minute and you have to vote on it or the entire project dies.
May, Madam Chair? We did, we, we were, um, shown this information. I'm not gonna say what date it was, but it was maybe a few weeks ago um, that you did a present, this same group, I believe, did a presentation to the city council. Um, and I think we were allowed to ask questions, um, and we were
Right.
I'm not sure if you were there or not, and I'm not sure if it was in the finance committee, if it was in the city council meeting. But we, this is not the first time that we've heard of this.
That was first time for me.
I just wanted to say that, thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Delgado, remember the committee, you wanna say anything?
No, I mean, I think we've heard everything. I think the explanation of the bond piece was super important um, to understand what the liability on our end is. Um, I still don't fully understand all the money pieces, where the dollars are going and how they're, like, who authorizes them to, you say you're, you're essentially getting this bond. And that money that we are not getting is going, the bond is essentially covering that portion
Right.
of the tax revenue we're not getting.
Only cause I just have done this.
Okay, yeah.
For just, just to kinda dumb it down for, uh, if you wanna give, uh, just, um, so if we look at, we all go out to the property today and we walk around and the city, if I have any of this wrong, jump in. So this, it's been general consensus that the, the, the current assessed value of that property sits at around seventeen million.
Well, I'm gonna have to.
I'm just saying, so let's say.
We have public speak. So I, you'll be.
You can explain it, right?
Just move it to the full council.
I'd say it was moved to the full council, I think, you know, they've heard everything.
All right, we'll see everybody at seven. Thank you.
Thank you, bye.